...an awful lot accomplished, so we invited the kids who participated and if it's okay, we'd like to award them a certificate and then we'll take them out into the hall, take some pictures and give each one of them a gift for their effort.
Sounds great. Why don't you stand up, kids, and let us give you a round of applause and you can get your certificates.
Well, there are also some parents there too who aren't here, but some parents helped us too, so, okay, we'll start with Angelo Molas. Molas, is that how you say it? Thank you, Angelo. Jana May Gurulee. Is it George Jorge?
Jorge.
Jorge. Jorge Torres. I'm gonna make sure we say it right. Kristen Reiting. And Ethan Perry. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Well deserved. Thank you very much, kids.
And I just wanted to recognize the organization that made this possible. We have art that was made by club members to gift to Craig. Thank you so very much. It's been a transformation at our club. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig, would you please state your full name though, please?
Yeah, my name is Craig Pové. I'm the Prevention Administrator at the Utah Division of Substance Abuse and Mental Health. And on behalf of, hey, I'm getting a little emotional. These kids are awesome and thank you guys for allowing a little time for this to happen. My boss, Doug Thomas, Director of the Division of Substance Abuse and Mental Health, and I were at a training one day learning about 30 years of research that shows that teaching kids skills and giving them opportunities to use those skills is a vital component of helping protect them against many of the adverse things that we know that they'll be facing. A lot of intergenerational things that can be broken by providing some of these opportunities. And then the final part of that is to give them recognition for doing those skills and things. And this is, this is perfect. I got chills just being able to be a part of this. But Doug, he's out of state or he would be here. When we were offered this opportunity to come up from Salt Lake, I said, "What do you think, Doug? Do you think you could pull that off?" He goes, "Count me in." And it turned out that, you know, he's out of state and was unable to make it. And he says, "You gotta go. Do whatever you can to be there." We love the kids in Utah. We love the adults that support them. Doug worked hard to get these funds together. We heard about the research and that was just a matter of pulling together some funds. He says, "Whatever we do, we gotta make sure that the funds can be used at the local level to match what they need." And as you can see, it lined up perfectly. So, these are great, by the way. What a, what a great looking plaque or picture that they have here. And thank you guys. And thank you, Commissioners, for, again, for your time and for the recognition.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Great organization. Thanks for all you do. And yes, if you wanted to sneak out for pictures, that's just fine. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might just add a-
Please.
-a little bit there. This is the type of organization that really helps our community because they've been able to identify a needed population and find funding from outside of our area that will help improve the lives of some of the children to try and help them have a brighter future than they otherwise would have. This is not something that we were able to do locally, but because of Craig and the organization at the state and the local people who are able to go out there and help find some of that funding, it made it all possible. And we're, we're teaching our youth some of those needed characteristics of hard work and discipline and teamwork that they need to learn so that they can be successful later on in their life. And so I just want to, again, thank you guys for all that you're doing and helping our community be a better place.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angelo, and Craig too. That's appreciated.
Our next item is the presentation of a check to the United Way of Southeastern Utah for the Breast Cancer Awareness Softball Tournament and International Day's 5K Run. So we'll turn the time over to you, Frank.
Thank you very much.
Looks like you've got a big-
I've got a great crew. These are, these are some special ladies we have behind us. This is the USU Eastern softball team who is in their second year of play at, at the college. And we've developed a great relationship with these ladies. We share facilities. They utilize our softball fields. One of our softball fields is their home field. And because of that, we've developed a great relationship with them. They, they help us with some stuff in kind in exchange for the use of the fields. And, and we'd help them with some fundraisers and stuff like that. And so the first weekend in October, we hosted our third annual Breast Cancer Awareness Softball Tournament. And we have, these girls, they umpired, they kept score. I think it was like a 14-hour day for them. We started at like eight in the morning and what, what time did we get done? About midnight? Something like that? And then a few weeks later, they helped us out with a softball tournament that we did. It was our Monster Mash that the sheriff was a part of too. And we were able to, the work that they did, we're able to do a little donation for them so they can get some new uniforms this year. So at this time, we'd like to welcome the United Way here. We have a check. The tournament proceeds go to the Live Love Local Cancer Fund. And with, with the work that we've done, we had 22 teams in here from, a lot of them from outside the area. And we were able to raise $4,236. Now, a portion of that, of course, was our International Day's 5K run. I think the 236 that we raised was for the 5K run. But a check for $4,236. And I'd be remiss if I forgot about the Sun Center too. They were there helping us throughout the day. Terry, Terry Johnson and his crew. And then we had a number of volunteers from the United Ways as well that came. And we've made this an annual tournament. We keep adding teams to it every year and, and we're hoping that next year we can push over our goal to $5,000. So here's the check and congratulations. Thanks.
Can I just say thank you to you guys?
You can do whatever you want.
Thank you to Frank for organizing this thing and putting this together and for all of these beautiful ladies behind me. Not only was it a long day, but it was a fun day. Yeah? We had fun keeping score and doing some cool stuff. So thank you, Frank, very much. And this will go a long ways. We have 14 really families that are represented that we are currently helping through our Live Love Local program. This will help them. Thank you.
Just want to add, with this $4,000 check, Carbon County and its employees and the Recreation Department have raised $40,900 for local charities this year. So, pretty cool.
Very, very cool. So, thank you very much, all of you, for your help and for taking part in those. That's, it's a great cause.
These ladies are awesome. You need something done, they'll take care of it. Thanks, ladies. Thanks.
Great local groups. That's an incredible amount. $40,900.
It's fantastic.
Very good.
Frank does a great job.
Our next, our next item is the awarding of a contract for Price River Fuels load removal. Justin?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So after reviewing, you want me to read in the bids? We did, so we had three contractors bid on the, the project. First was Nelco Contractors at $58,525. The second was Nielsen Construction Staker Parsons for $66,431. And the last one was TSJ Construction for $64,200. After review of the bids, I didn't see anything wrong with any of them, so I have no reason not to say Nelco Contractors was the low bid. And that would be my suggestion of who we use for this project, just for a little information for the record.
Please.
The forestry fire in state lands has changed the agreement we have with them. So instead of paying into a suppression fund now, we have to take that same money and use it for different things, for building sustainment, response, fire departments, doing prevention activities. And we have to do fuels mitigation with a minimum of 50% of that money. So our match is $99,000. So this $58,000 comes out of that match and it provides our community with fire protection services. So it's going to reduce fire loading on 35 acres down on the river behind JB's on Kepis' property. They've been good partners to let us do this work, so.
Thank you. Any questions or any other discussion for Justin?
Just as a matter of disclosure, Nelco Contractors are my in-laws, so I will abstain from any voting here.
Thank you, Commissioner Hopez. So we do need a motion to move forward.
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
And I'll step down and I'll second that, that the bid, the award be, the bid be awarded to Nelco Contractors. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one sustaining, or one abstaining vote. Thank you. The next item that we need to do is to go into a closed session to discuss ongoing litigation. And where we have as many people as we do already tonight, if we can have a motion to do that, we'll take the recording and we'll step into the conference room. Probably be about 10 minutes, 15 minutes. And then we anticipate being back out of that closed session. So that would leave you able to just, you know, stay here in the commission chambers. So we'll take a motion to go into closed session.
Make-